Madam Clerk, could you please read the row?
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
And Mr. Foyce.
Here.
All right, it is now time for a moment of silence. All right, thank you. The pleasure this evening will be led by Councilmember Jonathan Greider. You'll join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended, and the amendment is, we have three amendments. The first is for item two, public hearing, to add the following resolution confirming approval of bid documents, specifications, form of contract, estimate of cost, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed. For item six, public hearing, to add resolution confirming approval of specifications, estimate of cost, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed. And for item six, under resolutions, to add an amount not to exceed $15,500, as well as the minutes of the August 1st, 2022, regular session as proposed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. We have an agenda. First up is our public comments. Do we have anyone registered?
We do. We have Marcella Grover is registered to speak.
If you would please take the stand, state your name and address for the record.
I want to say thank you, first of all, to the mayor and the city council members for allowing me to speak. My name, excuse me, is Marcella Grover. I live at 203 Miriam Drive, Waterloo, Iowa. And again, I stand before you in opposition to the Pride Fest being in the city of Waterloo, Iowa. And I'm asking you to ban all the gay Pride Fest in the future. This issue is not one of civil rights or discrimination. Any city has a right to refuse a permit for the purpose of flaunting the homosexual lifestyle and indoctrinating our community into accepting the LGBTQ group as an alternate lifestyle, which it is not. Our God, the one true Jehovah God, calls homosexuality a sin. The one true Jehovah God is far superior in intellect and wisdom than anyone on earth, and he calls homosexuality sin. And we find this in the Holy Bible. The scriptures references are both found in the Old and New Testament. And I will share Leviticus 18, 22 to 24, and also Leviticus 20, 13. In the New Testament, it's Romans 13, excuse me, Romans 1, 18 to 32. Sin has never benefited a single person. All it causes is shame, regret, pain, and sorrow. So why is the city of Waterloo supporting the sin of homosexuality through its Pride Fest? You, mayor, and members of the city council are the moral voice of this community. Vote no to ban all Pride Fest in the future. I've given each one of you two papers concerning the Equality Act. This Equality Act will destroy the U.S. Constitution. And so, so many people do not know about it. I am giving you these papers for you to understand how it operates. So it's very important for this city to stand up for what's right. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. First off, I'd like to ask that consent number 17 be removed for further discussion. I also note on the computer today, there was a work session concerning Title I. And they, on 14A10, it was struck out that the council can only speak for three minutes. Why, if we can only speak for three minutes, to bring, to bring up, to be brought up to speed on an issue that the council can speak as long as they wish, when they should already have been aware of the issue? Somewhere in this, I feel violations of our freedom of information can only, can only those elected know what's going on with our government. And also on Title I, let me see, it's 1A, 14A16, number eight. They also have, you're adding it, request of the items to be removed. Why can we not have an item removed if we want to know more about it? It just doesn't seem like there's any communication between our city council and the people you represent. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda-related items?
Good evening. Todd Obedal, 124 Amity Drive. I rise here as a citizen of Waterloo, and I want to acknowledge the, the shooting incident that took place this, this weekend. And I want to offer my sincerest thoughts and prayers to the families of everyone that was involved there. It was a terrible thing that happened. And I want to, once again, state my utmost respect for the Waterloo Police, Police Department and the efforts that they give to us on a daily basis and the situations that they're put in on a daily basis. They, they, they put themselves out there, never knowing what's going to happen. And I've said it from this podium before, and I'll say it again, it's a job that not many of us in this room would desire having. So I want to give my greatest amount of appreciation for that. I also would like to commend the, the city of Waterloo and the civic leaders of Waterloo for not jumping to any conclusions about what happened there. I did see a video. I have initial ideas of what happened, but I do not know. I think it's best that we fully, you know, investigate, let things turn out, and the truth will come out. And I'm very proud of my community that there were no calls for seditious riots or civil unrest until all the, until all the facts come in. I'm reminded that it was just a couple of weeks from now will be the 26th anniversary of a very, of a, of a, of a shooting in Iowa City. And the Iowa City community stayed calm throughout that. And I think it's, I think, I think it speaks very well for the city of Waterloo and citizens of Waterloo, the place that I call home, and how, how, how the citizens have conducted themselves under this circumstance. As representative of the police chief, thank you lieutenant, and thank, thank you for all your men. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other public comments going a second time? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm not the mayor, but go ahead, Mr. Greider.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor of town, excuse me.
That's okay.
So I would like to formally invite everyone to Pride Fest, which is next weekend. It's August 26th and 27th. You know, the, the Constitution of our country, which I teach, is a messy and complicated document. In its original writing in 1789, it only included people in full equality. That only makes up a small minority of this council and a small minority of the folks who are here and who are watching. But the United States of America is founded on the fundamental idea that equality is important and can be expanded. Pride Fest is important because as we have seen in the last several years, folks, many of them with power, some of them holding the highest offices in the land, have punched down at a group that has traditionally and for a long time been oppressed. They have been treated as different, and we are seeing the uptick in language that we haven't seen since the 60s and 70s of people in the LGBTQ community being groomers or sexual predators on the prowl to indoctrinate our children into their alternate lifestyle. I do agree that there, that, that it's not an alternate lifestyle. It is the lifestyle of millions of Americans, of thousands of people from Waterloo. And so I'm very glad that we are going to have an event to showcase these people and show that they are loved because folks in the LGBTQIA+ community are twice as likely to commit suicide ideation across all age groups compared to heterosexual, same-sex peers. And individuals who are transgender are four times as likely. It is important that we protect these individuals. It is important, when we talk about the Constitution and the Bill of Rights, that we ensure that we enshrine that very first right that is included, which is the freedom of religion. We are allowed to believe whatever we want or believe nothing at all. And that is what makes America great because we do not come in presupposing anything about folks, but we come in treating everyone with equality. So I hope to see everyone at Pride Fest on the 26th and 27th. I also want to applaud city staff for the 2.5 million investment that's going to happen on the La Porte Road.
Twenty, twenty point five.
Yes, 20.5.
One of the largest, one of the largest gifts in the country.
That is going to fundamentally remake an important thoroughfare in my ward. I want to thank Senator Grassley and Representative Axney for voting for it. I want to thank President Biden for signing it. I want to thank all the city staff who, who made this possible. It is going to do transformative things for that corridor.
And Mayor Pete.
And Mayor Pete, Secretary of Transportation. I also want to, to all of my colleagues who are going back into buildings this week to shape and change and build the futures of our communities as public school teachers, I want to wish you the very best year you can have, full of joy and wonder and learning. You are doing tremendous work, and you don't hear it enough, but I applaud everything that teachers do in our community. And finally, in the name of transparency, I will be having a constituent forum next Wednesday at the Waterloo Public Library at 5:15 PM. Planning and zoning and development director Noel Anderson has agreed to come on down to the Thunderdome with us for that. So you can find that. In addition, you can also sign up for my newsletter at greiderforwaterloo.com. That's a twice-a-month newsletter that I put out about what the city is doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
This weekend, I had the privilege of volunteering and attending the Cedar Valley Arboretum backyard barbecue. It's the, it was the annual, the first annual event, the first time it's happened, the inaugural event, if you will. I thought it went really well. It was really successful. So thank you, Cindy Wells, for inviting me to volunteer for this, and I look forward to seeing it happen year after year and establishing a new tradition here in the city of Waterloo.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to close public comments.
Second.
Motion made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Public hearing closed.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to authorize the consent agenda with the addition of 1A1 bill's payment for August 8th at $2,735,391.67. And for Monday, August 15th, 2022, at $6,403,562.32.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to, I'm sorry.
Second.
Second, sorry.
All right, the motion has been made with the second. Mr. Bozen.
I would like to have 1A14 actually move to the regular agenda and off the consent agenda. And I would like to pull B4 and 5 for further discussion off the consent agenda.
What was the other one, the first one?
1A14 is the CAT ordinance. I'm moving into the resolutions, so then we can have further discussion on it, too.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I also have consent agenda item 1A15 removed from the consent agenda for, for the discussion as well?
And then I think we have 17, too, right?
Yep.
So we have items B4 and 5, 1A14, 1A15, and 1A17, correct?
1A14, if you take that as the first resolution, it should have been in that section.
So do that one first.
We can wait till we get to the resolution section for that one. It should have been there.
Oh. Let me take that up. That's part of the resolutions. So I think I have it. So there was a motion and a second for the other items. Madam Clerk, roll call vote for the ones that were not pulled.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Let's take 1A15 first.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution waiving the aircraft landing fees for American Airlines for the remaining months of the current two-year airport and airline use agreement between Waterloo Regional Airport and American Airlines, Inc.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Yes, sir.
Okay, so I was just hoping we could discuss this, and I was hoping Keith could talk more about what this is, what the goal of this is and the potential down-the-road goals in removing the airline fees are as it relates to economic impact.
Mr. Caspari.
Good evening, councilmembers. Keith Caspari, Airport Director. This request coming to you tonight is to certainly encourage officials at American Airlines to place a larger aircraft into our community, especially as they go about changing their fleet mix of aircraft that serves communities our si, our size. So what we're trying to do is get on their radar, and with this waiver of aircraft landing fees would only be for the number of operations when, for example, in '23, if that's when it happens, that we are completely done, 100% done, with our construction program for next summer and early part of the fall, simply due to the fact that our priority project, we've already been advised by the FAA that our priority project for next summer is the reconstruction of Taxway Alpha West. We can't do the primary surface of our runway, which is half a mile longer than our secondary runway. And so there is no way that American is going to bring in a larger aircraft if they don't have the full runway to use. What this would do, I think also, too, is multi-fold. It puts us in a different, I'll say, position with our passengers in the greater Cedar Valley that we're, we're actually improving the air service development program at Waterloo. So what we're also trying to do, though, too, is, and I see that Dave, David Deeds, our chairman of the Air Service Working Group is here, is to eventually get a third departure from ALO. Now, that third departure could be a third departure to Chicago, O'Hare, their Midwest hub, or preferably it would be for a single daily flight to Dallas-Fort Worth. Of course, in this, in this business today, there's no guarantees that the airline is going to do this. It's just that if we can provide, I'll say, some skin in the game, per se, this puts us hopefully in a better position for American to make that decision that once the construction is done, that Waterloo is a favorable candidate community for the addition of that class of aircraft.
One more thing. There's supposed to be a new early morning flight starting soon. When does that become available?
Oh, great question. Yes, we're excited about the return, and we've been, we've been waiting for this return for about two years now, pre-pandemic, of a, an early morning departure that starts Thursday, September 8th, with about a 7:10 departure, getting you into Chicago at about 8:30. And then for that month, I think we also have an 11:50, 5:00 AM departure. On Saturdays, that, that departure would stay with a 7:10 and then a 4:44 in the, in the mid-afternoon hour. So we're looking forward to significantly getting a much improved schedule for our passengers simply due to the fact that our, our 6:35 departure today has less passengers than we would all like to see. We had good numbers today. We had good numbers today, except for that last departure. So we're hoping with that benefit of that schedule, we'll continue to climb out of the pre-pandemic or the pandemic basement for passenger totals.
Thank you.
You bet.
Yeah, I think, you know, we're, we're very fortunate to have the service we have. If you take a look at other communities around the state, they haven't been as fortunate as we have. So anything that we can do to, to further enhance that relationship, improve that relationship, whether it is the dollars we've been graciously afforded for renovations to paving, whether it is the parking, parking lot, whether it is a covert parking to help our patrons, but anything that we can do to continue to maintain service first and foremost is really good, given the, the type of situation we're in around the country. Smaller communities like ours are losing. We're keeping. And so Keith has done an extraordinary job to continue that relationship, nurture that relationship. David and the Air Service Commission are continuing to nurture that relationship. So we're, we're very fortunate to have what we have currently.
I appreciate that. If I could just make one last comment, and Mayor Hart just hit the nail on the head. Our business, airport, airline, and those relationships are critically important today, especially as we ease out of the pandemic. So whatever we can do to continue to foster that relationship moving forward, I think only bodes well for our community and our region.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Todd Obedal, 124 Amity Drive. I'd like to thank Councilman Nichols for pulling this off the agenda and getting the, thank you for the explanation from Mr. Caspari. What I, what I hear here is that we're going to give away the rights to the fees that we have in hopes of getting something back. I don't think that's a good negotiating tactic. I think it's better to say that we are willing to negotiate on this in exchange for the service from larger aircraft or whatever else. Once, if we just, if we just give away what we're willing to give to get something before we get something, we're going to lose that negotiation. I, I, I give, I give deference to the people with the knowledge of, of the airlines and the airports, but the one thing that is clear is that we had a, we've got an agreement with American Airlines that they agreed to, and there's nothing in it that is forcing us not to collect money from it. And in times where, times, all the time I've been here, taxes have kept on going up every single year. I don't think this really goes over well with the community to say that we are going to give American Airlines a break while we increase the taxes of the citizens. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Greider?
Could, could Mr. Caspari just kind of give us an idea of how these landing fees work? Are these something that we collect every time there's a plane that comes? Is this only in special cases? How, what is the financial impact of, of waiving this fee for Waterloo citizens?
Thank you, Mr. Greider. This, I, I have to say this in contrast with Mr. Obedal, though. This is a highly common and widely accepted method of showcasing our community having some skin in the game, per se, to do what we can to up gauge the class of aircraft that currently serves Waterloo from the 50-seat to a to-be-determined 65-plus-seat aircraft. And so it's, I think it's a little short-sighted for Mr. Obedal to go there. But to give you an idea, Mr. Greider, how we, how we formulate our landing fees, we charge a bargain basement $1.69 per 1,000 pounds of landed weight of the aircraft. And so when you do the math at, let's see here, and I wrote it down here, $49,820 or pounds. So you take the buck 69, and it's about $84.20 per landing for the 50C class of jet. So when you get to a larger class of aircraft, let's say the CRJ-700 or the 900, or even maybe the Embraer 175, that would be my preferred two-class aircraft, three-class, honestly, the, the difference is not that big. Now, we do, as we all know, we have a financial stopback in with regard to use of the CURSA and the ARPA funds that we can use then to go back at the end of our fiscal year, June 30th of next year, and supplement those lost dollars. I cannot specifically use CURSA and ARPA funds for air service development purposes. So when you look at the, the big picture, how would we gain additional dollars or revenue? It would be most likely, because of the perception of a two-class aircraft, we would see additional traffic with parking revenue. Our fixed base operator, Livingston Aviation, is most likely going to see increased fuel sales, so it benefits them. There's not a lot of negatives to this request by staff, sir.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Bozen?
Since I was drawn into the conversation, I want to throw this in here. Just a couple of quick things. I think providing incentives is pretty typical in economic development, and that's really what we're discussing here. The good thing is, as Mayor Hart pointed out, is we do have service from the world's largest airline here to the Cedar Valley, and it's an important service that we continue to maintain. I think it's worth pointing out that the airport has operated without general fund support for well over 20 years at this point. So there is no direct impact of this on the taxpayers to the general fund allocations. So last thing I would say is... So last thing I would say is, back to the point of, we have service on the world's largest airline here in the Cedar Valley. It behooves all of us to use it, or, as they say, lose it. Now, we're doing well this summer, and I think we can continue to build on that momentum, particularly as Director Caspari said, with the return of the morning departures. It's, it's good things are happening at Waterloo Regional Airport, and I think it's a, it's a good time to be on board, no pun intended.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's good.
All right.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't know if Mr. Bozen or...
No, I'm done.
Okay, Mr. Caspari, sorry. Can I ask you just a quick question? All right. Not to belittle or belabor this point, but have you seen American pull out of other Iowa airports?
Uh, no, on it, well, no, simply due to the fact, but when you look at other airports, and there's only eight of us in Iowa, and you see what's been happening with regard to other essential air service communities, and that would be, in our case, in our state, Sioux City on the west, Fort Dodge, and then Mesa City, our neighbor to the north. And, and so with the threat of, of having their, their air service terminated, there's, there's a, an application out now where the Department of Transportation is looking at the potential of approving SkyWest bid to operate as a scheduled charter instead of a scheduled airline, where they would pull 20 seats out of a 50-seat aircraft. Because when you get to 30 or less, you're operating a different type of, of airline ticket, per se, operating certificate. And we do not want to get into that position here locally, without question.
And, and my second question then is, this is only for our current agreement then with American, which runs for two years, correct?
That is correct. Now, I will share with this, with this council, we have submitted our, our latest air serve, airport and airline use agreement. We have not seen it back yet, though, because it has to go through so many layers of review. When we get it, we'll bring that to this council for signature.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that very much. Thank you, Mayor.
And they, and, and so legacy carriers, all right, legacy, the big carriers. So I think part of his question, maybe not the same carrier, but legacy carriers within this state have pulled or, or planning to pull service from there, correct? From other cities?
They, they have, and, and again, we want to put ourselves in a more favorable position.
No, that's just to his point. Like, legacy carriers are leaving cities.
Yes.
We don't want ours. We're going to make sure we do the best we can and control what we can control. So, I mean, this conversation, you know, it's a good thing about conversation, it goes in several different directions. This is a good thing for the city of Waterloo to maintain, and so we're fighting like hell to make sure we keep what we have and support and work with our carriers, and we will continue to do that.
You're exactly right.
Thank you for your efforts. Thank you for your efforts, too, Mr. Deeds, and call the vote.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foist?
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. 1A17.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution fixing public hearing date as September 6, 2022, for a meeting on the proposition to authorize a loan and disbursement agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the city thereunder, and directing the clerk to publish notice.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. Mr. Dryer.
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. First, I hate acronyms. So what does Clean Water, SRF, Water Restoration Sponsored Project, what's SRF mean? And then I don't understand. The note will not continue constitute general obligations or be payable in any manner by taxation, but will be payable from and secured by the revenue, net revenues of the municipal sewer system. When the city owns the system, how can the taxpayer be exempt from any responsibility for paying for that if the revenues from the sewer revenues can't meet the obligation? You know? So therefore, to me, the citizen is eventually going to have to pay that back.
Potentially, but it's also based upon user fees. You can be a user, you can be a user of the fees and not live in the city. So hopefully it's paid back with user fees. And the state revolving fund, SRF, is a fund by the...
State revolving, thank you. I understand that.
Is a, is a fund that has been used for low-interest types of loans for the cities to be able to do projects in designated areas. And so from the treatment plant across the board, we've been able to utilize this tool. And we're not the only city. There's tons of cities that use the state revolving fund to try to help pay for some of these projects at a lower interest rate. As you know, and you've been around, I don't mean that, I mean, you just, we've been here. As you know, we've had anything from consent degrees to different projects that have to be done. And so the state, with all the EPA mandates and DNR mandates, gives us a financial tool to be able to have low-interest loans based upon their measures. So every project we do, it has to be approved by the state to be qualified for the state revolving fund. So it's a really good tool for low interest, low interest rate, for us to be able to do tens of millions in projects that we are mandated, mandated to do. And so this is setting the, the meeting for that, but it's a really good tool for us to have and, and cities across the state as well.
So the state revolving fund, behind the Capitol Building, they have a money tree. No, it's our money, and I don't care what term you put on...
They call it point of order.
A fee is a, is a tax.
This is about a public hearing date.
Right. It's setting the date of hearing, but he asked the question, what is the SRF? He asked about paying that back, and I think did answer that question. And now you're going to give me your opinion, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what is it? So we can move on.
My opinion is that no matter what term you put on a fee, a fee is a tax.
Uh, we're talking about...
If it takes money out of my pocket, sir, it's a tax.
It's, not everything is a tax, it's a fee. If you go, if you go up and buy a burger, you are getting a product. You are getting a product now, so it is a user fee. Not every person in the city pays that, so you're done, gave you your time, now I respond. But that is an actual...
It took a lot of my time, sir. Thank you.
You know what? You, 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 you get up, you get up every week, and people are courteous and gracious, no matter if you seem to make something up or you don't, but everyone is always gracious to you. So you're not, you're not obligated to be gracious to others, but I tell you, it makes a difference in the way that folks respond to you. So, thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Todd Obadol, 124 Amity Drive. Yes, this is, this is just putting, putting the resolution onto the calendar. I, I understand that, but I would just like to make the point that it, it does seem pretty clear that this resolution is going to pass on September 6th, unless something really strange happens. So I'd just like to point out that on September 6th, this council will raise the user fees for water in, for water for the citizens of Waterloo, and just reduce user fees for American Airlines. Thank you.
Did you, he spoke twice.
He spoke twice.
That's okay. All right. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foist?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Can I take four and five together?
Please.
All right. I'd like to adopt a motion to approve a change order number three with Veeth Construction Corporation of Cedar Falls, Iowa, for no increase in the project total in conjunction with the Five Sullivan Brothers Plaza renovation project, and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents. And number five, V5, is a motion to approve a change order number four with Veeth Construction of Cedar Falls, Iowa, for no increase for the, to the project total in conjunction with the Five Sullivan Brothers Plaza renovation project, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Mr. Bozen?
Thank you. And I, I know this, these are no cost, these change orders, because of the way they're, they're configured, but I want to express my disappointment in this project, because we have the League of Cities, the end of the last three days in September, we have 600 people coming in here under the assumption that that plaza was going to be completed. And when we voted on that, sitting right here, that, that, that day, that date was etched in stone that it was going to be completed by that date. We've done over $2 million worth of business, not counting the $1.5 million project we're doing at the Sullivan Brothers with Veeth Construction, and yet I'm under the understanding that it's not going to be completed in time. Not only that, is that the, the amount of times that I have driven by that and not seen but maybe one person working, I'm, I'm more than disappointed, and I want to know what we can do to push this thing along, to try to get as much done as possible. You can't even walk down Forest Street because we don't have a sidewalk. We have a fence out to the street, and we are going to have 600 people to this city, and we are the ambassadors for this convention for the Iowa League of Cities, and we're going to present them with a construction project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bozen. And I have the same concerns, too. So about a week or so, I think I had Jamie kind of take a look into the situation, and it's not a favorable one. Jamie, would you give your synopsis, trying to catch up on this project?
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. I was not originally involved in the project, Mr. Bozen, so I'm playing catch-up here. And as the mayor said, we've had conversations the last couple of weeks, trying to see what we can do to bring this back around to where it needs to be. I'm doing everything I can. That's part of the reason these change orders are on tonight. There's another one that you'll be seeing at the next council meeting, just trying to move these things along that have been sitting out there for, quite frankly, too long. So we're doing what we can to try to get this done as much as we can. It, it, as I said, I think at the last council meeting, it won't all be done, but we're going to do the best we can with, given the circumstances that I've been dealt. So hopefully, most of it, or at least it will be usable, all the landscaping, all the pretties won't be in, but it should be usable.
And I, and I had... Yes, sir.
Are there any repercussions for not having this done on time?
Typically, in a, in a contract that I am involved with, there are what are called liquidated damages, and those are damages that we charge beyond the date of a, of the completion. Typically on, again, on projects that I'm involved with, those are generally $1,000 a day. So every day past the completion date, we can charge the contractor $1,000, assuming they did not have legitimate reasons for extensions. Sometimes there's things that come up, we all know that with construction, that they get an extra day here, an extra day there, weather, those sorts of things. We work that out at the end. As I said, typically, that's the case. There is none in this case.
Yeah. And then, so I also got Marty involved, too, to try to see how this thing could expedite and move forward. So, yeah, it's a conundrum right now. So, like I said, when I was aware, got Jamie and I got Marty involved, and I actually called the owner of the company myself. So it's a lot of doing this, but the fact of the matter is, there's, I think there's three to four portions open up and something can be done. It goes to Mr. Bozen's point, too. Where are folks at? Where, where are folks working on this site? Mr. Bozen mentioned, so, you know, it's also something for us to keep, to keep, to keep track of in the future, too. Because, oh, responsible, responsible bidder as well. So something for us to keep track of, too. So I asked Jamie and Marty to see what they can salvage in this. So hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll have some type of update, but I'm pissed, too. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foist?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, and we have two appointments. Nivya Rodriguez for the Human Rights Commission, she's a reappointment, and Philip Shirck for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and he is a new appointment. So if both of you are out there looking, we want to say congratulations. Thank you for continuing, and thank you, Phil, for getting involved, being engaged, and stepping up. All right, so let's go to, we need to do, we need to wait till resolutions for the... All right. We'll wait for resolutions to do the cat thing. All right. Someone want to take number two?
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. Nichols?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for fiscal year 2023 wastewater treatment plant final. Clarifier number three, rehabilitation project, contract number 1067.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to clarify rehabilitation, going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read bids.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk.
All right. Our engineer's estimate was $700,000. Our first bidder was Clear Infusion LLC. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $538,800. Second bidder was Tricon Construction Group of Dubuque, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $846,000. Our next bidder was Woodref Construction of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $827,250. And our final bidder was WRH Incorporated of Amana, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount is $687,000.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution awarding bid to Clean Infusion LLC of Prussia, Pennsylvania in the amount of $538,800.00, approving the contract, bond, and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the fiscal year 2023 wastewater treatment plant final clarifier number three, rehabilitation project, contract number 1067, and authorizing mayor to execute said documents.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Do we have to add the approval of documents or is that at the end?
At the end.
The amendment for this item?
Is that the next one?
It is the next one? Okay, sorry.
Yep.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foist?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Charles?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of the documents, specifications, form of contract, estimated costs, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foist?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Foist?
Yep, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is a request by the city of Waterloo for a site plan amendment to the M-2P planned industrial district to allow for the construction of parking lot canopies located at 2790 Livingston Lane.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to Livingston Lane, going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time an ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance as by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10 dash four dash four, approving a site plan amendment to the M dash two P planned industrial district to allow for the construction of parking lot canopies located at 2790 Livingston Lane.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council questions on this item. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion been made with the second, madam clerk.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Thank you. Great job on this one. Number four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that is a request by Camenzin Masonry for a site plan amendment to the M dash two dash P planned industrial district to allow for the construction of a 10,800 square foot office slash warehouse facility located north and east of 2510 Levercy Road.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to Levercy Road Office Warehouse going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing, receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10 dash four dash four, approving a site plan amendment to the M dash two P planned industrial district to allow for the construction of a 10,800 square foot office slash warehouse facility located north and east of 2510 Levercy Road.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second, madam clerk.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second, madam clerk.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
And Mr. Childs.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number five, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that is for the sale and conveyance of city property located along Warp Drive and Levercy Road to Camenzin Masonry LLC in the amount of $1 with an option for additional property for the construction of a 10,800 square foot industrial building including approval of a development and minimum assessment agreement in the amount of $550,000 for phase one.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this development agreement going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd move to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of city owned land located at the northeast quarter of Warp Drive and Levercy Road to Camenzin Masonry LLC in the amount of $1 with an option for additional property and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council questions? Madam Clerk.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
And Mr. Greider.
Yes.
And Mr. Greider.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd move to adopt the resolution approving a development and minimum assessment agreement with Camenzin Masonry LLC for the construction of a new 10,800 square foot industrial building with a minimum assessed value of $550,000 for phase one and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion been made with the second, madam clerk.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, madam clerk.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Thank you. Great job on this one. Number four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that is a request by Camenzin Masonry for a site plan amendment to the M dash two dash P planned industrial district to allow for the construction of a 10,800 square foot office slash warehouse facility located north and east of 2510 Levercy Road.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to Levercy Road Office Warehouse going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing, receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10 dash four dash four, approving a site plan amendment to the M dash two P planned industrial district to allow for the construction of a 10,800 square foot office slash warehouse facility located north and east of 2510 Levercy Road.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council questions?
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, estimated costs, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, madam clerk.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could somebody take, you take that one last or do we put it in there now?
We can do it first.
Okay. Mr. Bozen.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a partnership between Cedar Bend Humane Society and Waterloo Animal Control Services to create and manage a city community cat program for trial period beginning August 15th, 2022 to January 31st, 2023.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, Mr. Bozen.
I had a number of questions on this. First of all, I want to make sure that we're not in violation of, and I'm sure Marty's looked into this, Iowa code 717B.8 clearly states that you can't release domestic animals into the wild. My other, my other question is, is, it says they're going to be released where they were picked up. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we have a database where these feral cats are picked up.
It's where we trap them, is where we'll return them after they're spayed, neutered, you're...
I just have a real issue with releasing feral cats back into, back into the community.
Thanks.
Based on the number of birds that they kill each year. I don't, I'm not that worried about rodents and whatever else that they, that they manage to make a little less, less of a population of them, but I'm really concerned with releasing them back in the wild. Under 717B.8, have we researched that, where we're at with that, of releasing domestic animals back into the wild?
This is just a trial period that we're trying.
Okay, but it's still in violation of the Iowa code then if we're releasing them? Trial period or not?
Yeah. So we've looked at that and we didn't think it would be a problem if the residents or people in the area do not want them back. You know, if we pick them up and they say they don't want them back, we won't take them back.
Well, where they take them?
Then they'll go back to the Humane Society as regular cats or they'll go out and barn cats.
It's, I, I just think there's more to be, to, I, I think even at a trial period releasing, if it's in violation of the state code, we needed to look at something different, even if it's a trial period. That's just my opinion.
The, we, we stopped trapping like November 1st through the 15th because of weather. So we won't be trapping any after that. It's just citizens who trap will take them in. So it's, I mean, it's a trial period. If you would rather not do it, we're fine with that too. We're just trying to work with the Humane Society.
There's, there's, there's a slight difference in cost.
$3.60 or something a cat.
Right. That's all I have.
All right, so when they, when they're, when they're, they're brought in, what happens to a feral cat when they come into the facility?
Most feral cats are euthanized.
Does that change the behaviors or how does that?
Not in a, not in a feral cat, no. No.
Yes, Mr. Dillavou.
1725 Huntington Road. I have a problem with releasing cats back. The reason being, when my kids were growing up, there were cats running the neighborhood. I had a sandbox out there and cats love sand and the debris that they deposit in that sandbox is not good for young children. I ended up having to fence a sandbox and put my kids in a cage so they could play in the sand. That's not right. And my wife is very susceptible to some infections due to some of the cancers she's had. And when they relieve themselves in her flower garden and she goes out to weed in her flower garden, I prefer not to have that cat waste in her flower garden. I love my wife, I love my kids. I've got great grandkids now and I probably will not give them a sandbox to play in because there are so many cats and people let them run free. I have trapped them and take them to the Waterloo Humane Society. If I trap them again, I'll probably take them someplace else. Thank you, sir. Thank you, folks.
Well, if you tell them you don't want it to return, they won't return.
The only, the only thing this will help out is these cats can't reproduce.
But yeah, I, I agree, the, the spayed and neutering, they, they can't reproduce, but they continue to wreak havoc in people's flower beds. They continue to wreak havoc with people's cars. I, I, I lived through that when I first got married, they, it was kind of a, they, they played every night on my car, they climbed up on my car and slid down the back fastback and that, that went on until, until I found a, a means to get rid of them. So I'm, I'm personally not in favor of, of releasing cats back in the wild.
All right, any other questions, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
At this point in time, Sandy, I don't know if you can answer this or not, but how many cats do we actually trap? Because I know if you go in my neighborhood, there are cats running all over the place.
We have traps set in Waterloo and Cedar Falls the whole season. So I can, I can look back. I didn't bring that information with me, but we do trap quite a few cats. And residents do, too. I mean, we're not the only ones who take them in.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
If this does not pass, are, do, I don't remember if you said this before, but are these cats, they're just going to be euthanized, essentially? They're not going to be, there's no way to take them in, have the procedures done so they can't have any more kittens, and then have them be adopted later?
The friendly cats are.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Counsel, any, anything else? All right. Madam, Madam Clerk, uh, roll call vote on the cats?
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Childs?
No.
Mr. Greider?
No.
Can, can I ask a question? So with the Cedar Bend, how does that, how does this have an impact with them? We're not going to get dropped, are we, or anything like that?
That's a good question. Um, this is a trial period right now, so the only thing they look at is that they, they don't have to euthanize as many cats.
Okay.
Continue?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Wilder?
No.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bosin?
No.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Let's take seven, eight, nine, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the following resolutions. Number seven is a resolution approving a development agreement with Mid Country Property Management, LLP, with tax rebates of five years at fifty percent and four years at twenty-three percent for the construction of a new eighteen thousand square foot office showroom and shop located at forty-seven one eight Sergeant Road, a minimum assessment agreement in the amount of one million five hundred fifty-three thousand three hundred twenty dollars, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute. Number eight is a resolution approving a purchase agreement with Soft Surfaces Inc. of Petroleum Canada in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars in conjunction with the FY two thousand twenty-three Lafayette Park Playground Resurfacing Project and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number nine is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Public Consulting Group for project management, cost analysis, quality assurance, and compliance with the Ground Emergency Medical Transport Program and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Any questions? Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes. All right, thank you. Uh, ten, eleven, twelve, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving professional services agreement with Strand Associates of Madison, Wisconsin, to provide engineering services for the wastewater treatment plant nutrient reduction study project in an amount not to exceed forty-four thousand two hundred dollars and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Eleven is a resolution approving construction plans for grading, paving, and utility serving the Edison Edition as submitted by the City of Waterloo sewage treatment agreement, DNR Form twenty-nine, November zero zero, with the Department of Natural Resources and final acceptance of construction plans subject to the review and acceptance by the Department of Natural Resources and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents. And twelve is a resolution approving city-state funding agreement for the federal aid funding in the amounts of one million dollars in conjunction with the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three Hammond Avenue Bridge Replacement over Sink Creek, Creek, contract number nine two two as part of the Department of Transportation's City Highway Bridge Program and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Questions about these items? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
It's supposed to be, it's this.
I think it's thirteen.
Yeah, it was supposed to be thirteen.
That's six.
All right, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt the resolution approving supplemental agreement number six to a professional services agreement with Wayne Clausen Engineering and Surveying, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, originally executed October tenth, two thousand sixteen in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand five hundred dollars in conjunction with the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three Hammond Avenue Bridge Replacement over Sink Creek Project, contract number nine twenty-two, and authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number fourteen, resolution approving Smart City Strategic Planning Services Agreement with Honeywell International, Inc. of Atlanta, Georgia, for the development of the Smart City Strategic Plan and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And number fifteen, a resolution approving employee policies and procedures handbook for city employees and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, counsel questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I had a number of questions. Oh, I'm sorry, someone coming up? Please. I didn't see him stand.
David Dryer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street, uh, resolution fourteen. I read through the contract, and I mean all of it, and I see where Honeywell can do this or that, but the city has not afforded the same ability. Also only see in a, in a price, uh, no cost statement for one project. How much would supplemental projects cost, and how many are they proposing? Because I see, uh, there's only one that's free, I guess, and how many more are they proposing?
So the, um, Honeywell, um, um, has a program that helps cities with smart city initiatives. Right now, uh, if you take a couple pieces out, any type of smart city concept for the city, then it, it's, it's not a formatted plan that someone can look at and pick up and take over. So Honeywell, the reason you saw zero is because they are not charging us for this. We were selected amongst, uh, other cities across the United States. They are going to come in and work, have one large meeting with various stakeholders across the city from education to, um, uh, healthcare, to city operations, and try to help us to develop a smart city strategy. And within that smart city strategy, they'll pick one or two initiatives that we feel strongly about. It could be, um, EV vehicles. It could be a number of different things that we decide, and they will, in addition to their resources, also help us to find grants and additional monies to pay for whatever project or projects that there, that we decide we want to do. So this is a really big deal for the City of Waterloo. There are a lot of people attracted, like, I think it was Harvard a little while ago, and now it's Honeywell. But great opportunity for the city to get some well-deserved technical assistance for, uh, smart strategies, um, for a smart city concept. Mr. Bosin?
Thank you. I had a number of questions on the employee policies and procedures handbook. I'll wait here for you to... My, my concern is that there were a number of changes in this book since it was presented to us in a work session. We didn't get this until, I, it wasn't in our packet, until I requested a, a copy of it Thursday, and Kelly was kind enough to send it to the entire council. It's a hundred and twenty-five page document. And there's a number of changes in there that are, that are different from what we discussed. I sent Mr. Dunn a, a five-page email with questions and concerns and some errors in here, of which he responded that he was going to make the necessary corrections. Some corrections were made, some were not. Some are still the same way they were when, when I sent the first email to, to him in March. There's, there's just a number of things. My, my first question for you, ma'am, would be, has this, prior to us adopting this in a resolution form, has this been disseminated to the business agents and the, uh, executive boards of our labor unions?
No.
And, and, and why would we not? Could you help me out with this?
We want the council to approve first before we do anything with it.
Well, my, my que-
It's still a working document as of now.
But if we approve it, it's not a working document. If we approve it, it's approved as is. Am I misinterpreting that?
It'll be approved as is. Do you want to just table it?
I, I would like to, and, and, and I would second that.